Meeting is called. To order.
Say that, do it again.
Um. Meeting is called on order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Indivisible. Madam Clark. Madam Clark may have the rule call place, please.
No, here, Rin.
Here.
Chess.
Here.
Vincent. Flaherty.
Here.
Mayor Ronnie.
Here.
Uh, well, good evening and welcome to our regular meeting for October two, twenty twenty-three. As you see, we have a special leader tonight, Mayor Ronnie Glover. We'll talk more about her momentarily. But um, our meeting is hybrid. The public can participate by attending the meeting in person, as many of you are here today in the council chambers at one hundred Gregory Lane, or you could join us by Zoom at www.zoom.us, click on Join a Meeting. The meeting ID is eight five four four zero seven four two nine six eight. Passcode two one one two eight one, also showing on your screen. Uh, moving to item four, we have no closed session to report upon. So we'll move to uh, item five point one, which is the acknowledgement of Ronnie Glover as our honorary mayor for the day. Ronnie is seven years old. And what grade are you in, Ronnie?
I'm in second grade.
At what school?
Sequoia.
And your favorite subject is?
Math.
Good for you. Uh, I understand that you have a sport that you love.
Soccer.
And how much do you love it?
Oh.
All right. Uh, Ronnie is here with her mom and dad, Bobby and Nicole Glover, and her big sister Haley. And we also see her grandma Carolyn Glover. Welcome. Uh, Ronnie is has the duties of our mayor for the day. She's gonna uh, lead us in our meeting until we get to the action items. So we're delighted to have Ronnie with us. Ronnie, if you could just take us to item five point two.
Introduction of Commission on Aging Commissioner Carolyn Bateman. Oh.
Uh, invite Carol Bateman. Are you here, Carol? Oh, there you are. Uh, as you know, Councilmember Vincent, who's not with us tonight, he's ill. Uh, Alan and I serve as the interview and nominating subcommittee uh, for the uh, city council, and we have the privilege of interviewing many candidates uh, to be considered for appointment to the Commission on Aging. Uh, this evening, I'm pleased to introduce you Carol Bateman, who was recommended by the committee and appointed by the city council to the Commission on Aging at its meeting on September eleventh uh, for a four-year term. Carol has been a resident of Pleasant Hill for forty-eight years. Uh, she's a retired physical therapist, which her career forty-five years, and she worked with John Muir Mount Diablo Medical Center for over twenty-five years in home care, often with seniors that were homebound in need of social and community services. Carol previously participated in our local cert team trainings and currently volunteers as a driver for the senior van and volunteers for the American Red Cross and John Muir Hospitals. Her knowledge, experience, and enthusiasm will be a wonderful addition to the Commission on Aging. Carol, I'd like you to come up to the podium so we can all uh, thank you for your service before you've rendered it. And uh, give you an opportunity to say if you were welcome.
Here?
Yes.
This is all new to me. My first political assignment. Well, thank you. Thank you, um, Mayor Flattery and um, Madam Mayor. Nice to see you. And uh, you never start too soon. That's great. I knew I wanted to be a volunteer when I was twelve years old, so you don't have much time to go. Anyway, I'm very honored that you have appointed me and um, I feel that within my heart and my soul, I will do the best I can. I have experience, I have thoughts, ideas, not sure they're all valid, but we'll find out. And uh, but it it's amazing. Um, the senior uh, climate in Pleasant Hill is very strong, and they express their opinions, and I hear them, especially when I'm driving the van. And so I'm uh, looking forward to sharing that, and I know the commission is is well, well-respected, and I feel honored that I'm part of the group.
Thank you, Carol, very much. Okay, we'll move to item six.
City Manager Amit.
Ethan Benner Eagle, our city manager.
Uh, no comments this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Madam Mayor, thank you.
Well, that's a first.
I was about to say, I don't think we've ever had that.
All right, we're gonna move to item seven, Mayor Ronnie.
Council Amit. Analysis. And reports.
Thank you. Item seven point one is reports from council members at meetings and conferences at to the expense. Anybody have anything to report? Oops. Uh, now there are no.
Uh, just two things. Uh, one, went to the Sustainable Contra Costa County Dinner, with I think almost everybody here. Um, and that's a, that's a great event, just uh, honoring so many people, companies, entities that have um, really focused on climate change and what they can do as part of their lives and their businesses. So that was a great, a great event. And then I attended the League of California Cities. Is it just last week, the week before last, I guess, week before last in Sacramento? I don't know how many thousands of people that were there, but uh, there are four hundred and I think eighty-five cities in California, and and they're all welcome to participate. I think there are only three cities that don't participate in that League of Cities. So it was a great event. Um, there was a lot of great speakers. Um, sadly, there was a little too much focus on hate speech and um, and divisions uh, that occur in our state and in the country. Um, so there are quite a few um, discussion points on that. And then there were obviously the good discussion points on HCD and Calpers, uh, you know, ongoing, I think every year they have those um, subjects, but um, HCD even more so um, this time. So Ethan and I represented the city there, and um, it was, it was a really, it was a great turnout, and it was a good event.
Anyone else having to report on item seven point one?
Not seven one.
So let's move to seven point.
Oh, I do. Sorry. Uh, yeah, so also attended the Contra Costa Sustainable Awards with um, with the majority of the of the staff. Also was really thrilled to attend Tinkers and Thinkers, which is a great community event in the park. Uh, it's a great partnership between the library and the Recreation and Park District here in Pleasant Hill. Uh, and it just, every year, it just never ceases to amaze me and how um, just the the great way that, you know, science uh, is communicated to uh, people and and also, you know, uh, young people getting involved in actually teaching the science. I just find that exceptionally uh, cool. And also, uh, we had our nineteenth annual uh, Community Service Day as well. Uh, so it was great to see everybody out there um, as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Uh, and what else?
Uh, yeah, if you want to roll into seven two.
Yeah.
Good segue by councilmember chess.
Announcements.
Did I jump the gun?
Wait, wait to tee that up.
General announcements, Vice Mayor Rin.
Uh, kudos, yeah, as well as for Tinkers and Thinkers. Um, and our uh, Community Service Day Civic Action Commission and all the volunteers that day. It was a very successful event in the Lions Club for yet another amazing breakfast out there, so we appreciate uh, that. I also uh, let's see, this last weekend was the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. Uh, so I had the honor of uh, presenting at their luminary ceremony. Uh, I believe it was their eighteenth year uh, for putting that on uh, within Pleasant Hill. Uh, so we are honored to host that event again. Hopefully, as medicine and science and technology advances, we won't have a need for cancer relays anymore to raise funds and awareness. Uh, but I know it's touched probably everyone's lives in some capacity or another. Uh, and then also uh, support the Chamber of Commerce. They did a mixer at Travis Credit Union downtown Pleasant Hill, and then they also did a a morning mixer at the Chamber Office. And those are my, this is busy couple weeks.
Very busy. Um, anything further?
No, just, you know, I I attended uh, some of these events as well. I'm sorry I missed Tinkers and Thinkers, but um, I know it had been super successful and County Community Service Day, I think it was great. Um, need to get more people out to eat pancakes, because I think they had quite a few pancakes left. But um, I think a lot of the volunteers went straight to their activities rather than to pancakes first, so uh, we have to work on earning more people to show up pancakes first and then volunteer. But it was a great event, and it was great to see some new youth groups as well. I think there was a large group of Leos from uh, DVC there. I think there were forty of them participating, so that was, that was exciting to see as well.
Uh, thank you.
If I may, I forgot one thing to highlight on Tinkers and Thinkers, my apologies, Madam Mayor and Mr. Mayor. Um, the library does have a few extra tinkers and thinker uh, crafting boxes available at the library. So if you miss the event and you have a child that's interested in that, uh, they have a few boxes available at the library, just need to go by the library and pick those up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, just to round everything out, I attend, attended the Sustainable Contra Costa Awards Gala on September nineteenth, along with the rest of the council. Uh, that event was held at the community center, and that was the evening where Pleasant Hill's tagline was changed from at the center of everything to at the center of everything green. Uh, also attended the Tinkers and Thinkers where I didn't know I was going to be volunteering, but I did volunteer uh, or was voluntold, uh, and I ended up uh, pumping up rockets for blast off uh, and got in a competition with uh, Paul Kachub, who was the other uh, pump expert, and tried to see who could get the rockets to go the furthest and have kids run to get the rocket and bring them back. Uh, I'm just gonna call myself the winner.
I was gonna ask who the winner was.
Uh, it was a great event. So uh, Mayor Ronnie, did you have an announcement about the library? No? Thought you told me, went to the library. You wanna tell us?
Add a class field trip.
Thank you.
To the library.
To the library? Excellent. All right. So let's move on to um, public comment. Uh, the public is welcome at this time to address the city council on items on the consent calendar, other items not listed on the agenda, but within our jurisdiction, the council's jurisdiction. Uh, but before we open a public comment for this evening's meeting, I do want to address the subject matter that uh, has been in the news, as well as uh, Councilmember Nowak commented on as being a subject matter at the recent League of California Cities uh, gathering. Uh, numerous public agencies around California and right here in our own backyard have encountered recently anonymous individuals taking advantage of the public comment portion of a meeting to engage in hateful language. They have launched these attacks at several public agency meetings over the past weeks, and let me be clear, on behalf of the city council and the entire city staff, the city of Pleasant Hill does not condone hate speech in any form. Hate has no place here. Equity and inclusion are part of our core values. We continually strive to make life turn the page uh, better for all members of our community and create an atmosphere where everyone feels a sense of safety and belonging. Uh, and with that in mind, uh, we will be making a change to the way in which we allow public comments provided via Zoom. In the past, remote participants could have both their video and audio active while offering comments. However, to enable our staff to quickly curb a caller engaging in racist, transphobic, or other hate speech, we will only allow remote participants to use their audio. We apologize for the inconvenience. However, we believe it is imperative to take these steps to preserve remote participants' opportunity to speak while maintaining a safe environment that rejects those espousing hateful dialogue. Uh, the rules also apply to everyone here in the in the chambers. Uh, if you engage in conduct that's disruptive to our council meetings, you will be deprived of your ability to further provide public comment at the meeting. We ask anyone who wishes to speak, thus so with civility, respect, and kindness for others. Thank you for observing this, and I now invite any of you to provide public comments. Comments are permitted to three minutes per speaker, and I have uh, several speaker cards that appear for, appear to be for general public comment, and so we'll start with those that are here in the chambers. Uh, Bob Kattonberg.
This walk gets longer and longer. Mayor Flaherty, Mayor Ronnie, Vice Mayor Ren, council members, good evening. Uh, my name is Bob Kattonberg. Uh, resident of Pleasant Hill since nineteen eighty-nine. Um, yesterday was the first day of the um, rain recording season, which goes through uh, May thirty-first of next year. Um, as you know, water, yeah, is 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 uh, I'm an advocate for water, let's put it that way. Um, I have a good friend who has spent years making presentations before uh, city council groups and 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 the like. Uh, and we were talking the other day, and and he said, um, you don't want to stand in front of the group and rattle off a bunch of numbers, because in about a minute and a half, their eyes are just plays over, and I don't want to do that. Um, so um, once I get a little familiar on how to uh, create a a PowerPoint presentation or something, something like that, uh, that I can show numbers and uh, uh, give you a printout of it, um, I'll be, I'll be back here to do that. Uh, truly, apparently, a picture is worth a thousand words. Uh, so um, I'll uh, I'll do that. The the last meeting uh, here, you had presentations from uh, two people, uh, East Bay Mud Representative and Contra Costa Water, and um, it's clear uh, to make bad fun that the state is awash in water right now, uh, but that probably won't last. And um, so uh, I'm gonna be coming back with 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 information based on last year's rainfall, which was formidable here in Pleasant Hill. Um, I'll leave you with one set of numbers, uh, that which got me going probably forty years ago on this whole project. Namely, uh, if you have a thousand square feet of roof area that's guttered and has a downspout with one inch of rain, you can collect six hundred gallons of water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kattonberg. We look forward to hearing more from you in the future. Uh, next, Todd Loman.
Good evening. I've never been so nervous to present in front of a mayor, Mayor Glover. So, uh, but I'd just like to take a minute and say, I think you're doing an exceptional job, and I know that uh, we have two young girls who can't be here tonight, but I just texted her mother, and they are watching you on live stream. So they're very excited to uh, to see it, and I applaud the city for having our youth up here for tonight. Um, uh, but I just want to start off and say good evening, Mayor Flaherty, council members and city staff. Uh, my name is Todd Loman. I have been a resident of Pleasant Hill since uh, two thousand and twelve. Tonight, I'd like to speak it on the topic of the notify me function of the city's official website. For anyone that's unfamiliar with this notification system, it's a helpful tool that's intended to provide up-to-date information to the residents of Pleasant Hill. Uh, Mayor Flaherty, I remember that back on the May eighteenth, um, a very attended city council public hearing, you specifically encouraged um, the entire audience to sign up for this service uh, to stay connected on important city issues. Specifically, at that time, it was about the housing element um, in Pleasant Hill. I completely agree with this. Um, and want to take a moment to plug the notify me tool um, on the city website. So for anyone that is not familiar with it, please go to the city's official website, which is PleasantHillCA.org, um, select the government tab, scroll down and uh, select the notify me button, and then you can enter um, and select the topics that you'd like to stay up to date on. Um, I would hope that by uh, doing this, we can increase community awareness around this tool and improve community representation and involvement in the future. On the flip side, I would also hope that the city takes full responsibility to stay current with this tool, understanding the importance of providing accurate and transparent communication to those community members that are expecting to receive updates and notifications through this vehicle. So this is where my uh, tone slightly changes, though, because in early May, I personally submitted my information to the notify me tool and selected a few topics I would like to be notified about, specifically the city council, planning commission, GPAC, and housing element. Since May, there has not been one single GPAC or housing element notification sent through the notify me um, function. And yet I know there have been key updates, such as a housing element submission, a response letter from the HCD, and a recent city Zoom meeting between the HCD and city staff. So why aren't these updates being communicated through the notify me channels to all of us residents that have signed up for this system? I recognize the city staff might direct us to the PleasantHill2040.com website. I would like to take a moment, though, to acknowledge that this is an independent website separate from the official government website of Pleasant Hill. It is important for the community to uh, know that this website is independently operated and managed uh, by Mentor Harnish Consulting Firm. It has an email list signup that provides notifications through an outgoing mailbox, which is office@mentorharnish.com, and a comments box that will submit your comments to brent@mentorharnish.com. Is this what our community can expect? Um, and I asked the city council and uh, city staff where the ownership is in all of this. Um, in the spirit of government transparency, I think it's important for the city council to be clear with the residents of Pleasant Hill of where they're getting their information from and who are they providing it to. I mean, wasn't that the point of the notify me function in the first place? Additionally, how is the city council monitoring the communication between the public? I'll be wrapping my thoughts shortly. Um, uh, unless Ronnie wants to throw me out.
So she just told me it's red.
All right, keep that gavel back there, okay? Um, additionally, how's the city council monitoring the communication between the public and the consultants at Mentor Harnish as they, as uh, and there, is there any accountability? Uh, if I am expected to submit my comments to brent@mentorharnish.com, can I trust that we will be treated with the same respect and transparency um, that we would expect and have with our own Pleasant Hill elected officials? On May nineteenth, one of our Pleasant Hill neighbors did in fact reach out to the office of Mentor Harnish and communicated over email, sharing their concerns and immediate personal observations, which we are all entitled to. As I reviewed the email exchange, I personally found the tone to be contentious and unrepresentative of the way I would imagine any of you would respond uh, to a concerned fellow community member. The closing sentence is from Mentor Harnish read, "Now you're being insulting again, suggesting that we are, more accurately, I don't care about people, but only care about making money, is about as insulting as it gets for me. No, I won't change a thing about my business based on your opinions, and yes, I know exactly where you're coming from, which is why this will be our last communication." Having been in the chambers that night, I know it was an emotional evening for many, but this is why government communications are intended to be uh, available to the public to ensure accountability and transparency between the city and its residents. If the city chooses direct us to PleasantHill2040.com for updates on communication regarding the general plan and housing element, is it an acknowledgement um, that we should rather communicate with brent@mentorharnish.com than with our own city staff and council?
Mr. Loman?
Yes, I'll wrap up here in closing.
I mean, you got ten seconds.
Thank you. I would just like to point that the HCD clearly directs in their recent response that public participation in the development and adoption implementation of the housing is essential, and that uh, any revision C element must be posted on the local government's website and to email a link to all individuals and organizations that have previously requested these notices. Until we can fix the notify me function, I feel like we are failing the HCD's expectations.
Thank you. You had a lot there. Appreciate it. Maybe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Glover.
Uh, so, Mr. Loman, I'll just ask the city manager to follow up on your comments internally and and respond to you.
Thank you.
But you should be aware, and I think you saw this when you signed up for notify me, it's seeking, it notifies you of agendas and meetings, and and the two subcommittees that you said you received nothing from haven't had any meetings since May. The items that you refer to were internal staff review and actions and not yet even brought to the council. So certainly, they'll become part of the public and part of the notify me when they become part of a council or other meeting agenda. But I do appreciate that you're aware of what's going on, so there must be some flow of information other than through notify me where you're learning of the actions that are going on here in City Hall, and that's something we'll reflect on. Maybe we can improve on that as you suggest.
Yeah.
I do appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, next, we have David Calder.
Uh, thank you, council members and Mayor Ronnie, who seems to be more comfortable in front of the public than I am. So. Um, I uh, last, last I was here, I was uh, shortly after all the big rains that came in in uh, in December and January of this year, and thank particularly the police department for helping me with the front of my house, which was blocked for ten times during the rainstorms and helping me man the barricades there. And I just wanted to kind of come in and advocate a little bit for more action in that area. Uh, this is a twenty-fifth anniversary of the ninety-seven flood, which you saw pictures of last time I was here, took out my house, and and then there was about ten years ago, or fifteen years ago, that uh, that another flood hit and took out my cars and and did some substantial damage. Uh, so we're, we're still getting a lot, and uh, I think this probably relates more to Ronnie than it does to me, but the climate is changing, and this has got to be something that we have to adapt to. So um, when I see in the Pleasant Hill newsletters that the uh, other creeks are being modified for the library, or they're being dredged, or they're being cleaned and things like that, it really hurts to see that, you know, there's not a lot of things in the plans for the Murder Creek area for Macefield and Shelley and Patterson Boulevard. Uh, we all have um, some real risk here. I think luck isn't really a strategy. It could, we could continue to not have the floods this last year. It was a miracle that I didn't have any serious damage other than it tore out my new landscaping that uh, I just put in that was drought tolerant, as ironic as that can be. So. But I've talked to Anathan over the year, and and he's been pretty receptive to all of this. We, I've got some proposals on the table. He says he's been working with some proposals that he has. Most recently, when I talked to him, we had um, a a concept that I really want to push forward, which is uh, if we can't do the full thing, and I never was expecting that, that there are some minor modifications that we can do to the outflows that will keep the back pressure from coming back in. And as I've done before, I'm I'm more than willing to contribute substantial financial help to the city to do this. I've offered to do it completely before, but I've, I've since put a hundred thousand dollars into remediation and fixing my house. So I don't quite have as much money as I used to have to do that, but I will support a proof of concept on the, on the outflows for the Patterson, the drain that supports my house. I really think that it would cover ninety-seven percent. So I'm here really to advocate, to help uh, Anathan to uh, to uh, to 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 move that forward, if at all possible. Um, the uh, the other thing I'd like to do is uh, is is ask the police department, uh, as they did this past year, to be ready for the next, uh, for the upcoming, all right? And what I'd like to do is maybe ask for a little more, because what we've got is uh, a um, uh, a a bunch of people that try to go around the barricades. And they've threatened me, and they've tried to run me over, and I mean, they go around the barricades, and then they destroy my, my garage door and my, and my, my yard. So what I'd like to ask is that we get some detour signs, because there's a really, really easy detour around that flooded area up over Hillcrest, over the Hillcrest and up, and and over by the library. And so we can get a detour sign put up that says road flooded, and then one other sign that says, if you go around the police barricade, uh, there's a five hundred dollar fine. I I believe that applies here as well as it does statewide, that if if there's an official police barricade and you go around it. So a couple of signs, maybe a detour, but certainly what you did last December, uh, last December, January was was very helpful, and I've not, I didn't have to do near as much as I've had in previous years when the, when the streets flooded, so. Many, again, many thanks, and uh, and that pretty much concludes what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Calder. I recall your prior public comments about the same subject, and we'll follow up with Anathan to see where they are.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention again. Um, are there any other uh, people who wish to provide public comment here in the chambers? Seeing none, we'll turn to our virtual audience. Is there anyone online who wishes to join us?
There are no hands raised.
Seeing none, hearing none, being advised of none, we will close public comment, and we'll turn it back to our honorary mayor for the day, Ronnie Glover. So Ronnie, I think this is the time where you have to go and finish your homework. Hey, uh, do you want to say anything to your uh, constituents before you say goodnight?
Well, I wanted to give a big shout out to my sister, because she just missed her, well, um, night for school. She had a big special night.
All right. Yeah, it was very nice of her to do that, to see you. Uh, and as uh, Mr. Loman indicated, this is being broadcast live, so hopefully all of your classmates are watching, everyone in your school, and certainly your teacher, uh, so she'll know that you've been the mayor of Pleasant Hill. Uh, well, with that, Ronnie, we have a couple of things to give you. Uh, yeah. Ronnie was asking me for candy earlier, but she's getting a proclamation and certificate of appreciation instead. And Pleasant Hill shopping bag full of all sorts of things. And perhaps a piece of cream. So, thank you. Let me deliver you back to your parents. Ronnie begged me to stay for these next items, but her parents said no. We're going to move to the action calendar, item ten point one. Strike that. We're going to move to the consent calendar, which is item nine. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine. And it will be enacted by one motion. There are no separate council discussion on these items unless requested by a council member prior to the time we vote to adopt. We have a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Rin, the second from Councilmember Nowak.
Nowak?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Schess?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Abstain from nine point one, yes to the balance. Move to the action calendar, item ten point one. This is the acceptance of the Pleasant Hill Tourism Improvement District annual report for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. And I believe we have our economic development manager, Zach Seale. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So this item is the annual report for the first year of the five year term of State Pleasant Hill, which is the management entity for the Pleasant Hill Tourism Improvement District or the TID. I did before I bring up State Pleasant Hill to make their presentation. I just wanted to point out so that there's no confusion that TIDs are regulated by the state and the state naming convention requires this annual report to be called the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four annual report. But really, it's a look back at the prior fiscal year as well as, to a lesser extent, a discussion of some of the goals for the current fiscal year that we're in now. But the fiscal audit and the activities that are going to be reviewed reviewed are really about the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three fiscal year. So with that said, I am going to introduce the Chair of the State Pleasant Hill Board of Directors, Tracy Collins, who is also the General Manager of the Residence Inn Pleasant Residence Inn by Marriott in Pleasant Hill. And so she will talk a little bit about State Pleasant Hill and then bring up the CEO to give a presentation on the annual report, Trish Snowden. So with that, Tracy, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Tracy Collins. I'm the Chair of the Board for State Pleasant Hill. I have worked in Pleasant Hill for about fifteen years now, about nine years at the courtyard by Marriott that is now Sinesta. And now I'm at the Residence Inn by Marriott. I'm the General Manager there. Been there about a year, in my position about a year and a half, been on the board now. Oh, thank you.
Forward back. I'm going to move to the mic.
I'm sorry. Usually I'm loud enough for um. But I've had the pleasure of being on this board now for a year and a half, and it's just been an honor to get to know the city of Pleasant Hill a little bit better, see all the wonderful things the city has to offer for our tourists and all of our travelers. So thank you so much for having me again. I will introduce our board members to you. We do have one here this evening, and that's Bradley Weber. He is sitting right over here. He's our General Manager at the Hyatt House, and he's our Secretary Treasurer. Tony Dungar, he's not here tonight, but he owns our Pleasant Hill Inn Hotel on Contra Costa Boulevard. Jay Rena, also not here, General Manager of the Sinesta property. And then Zach is our a member on our board, of course. And then Jeremy Carlson, who represents our chamber. So it's an amazing, amazing group of people. And I'm really excited to hear everything that our CEO and our Director of Sales has to share with you guys this evening. And I'll pass it on to Trish. And she will share the great stuff we've done all year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council and city staff. Nice to be here again. Here we go in front of the mic. I have more than three minutes right now. It's, you know, it's a pleasure. I've been up in front of you guys once before and it was kind of barely just got started. So it's really feels really good to be up here and be able to kind of just present to you guys what we've been up to for the last year. I see most of you at lots of different events over time, but this is a real chance for us to let you know what we're up to and all the good things we're doing. And we're just proud to be able to represent Pleasant Hill. And we're here to talk about that a little bit. So as Zach mentioned, it really is a look back on our first year. So, you know, this organization took over in April first of twenty twenty two. So that's, you know, part of the presentation is really going to be looking back. We're already in almost, we're about five months into our second year already. And so we'll do a look forward as well to what things we're working on right now. And I think, you know, this is presented in an annual report. Obviously, you guys have that. So this slide is really just kind of the overall, really what was spent, what was budgeted and what was spent kind of in categories. So for the management district plan, we have these categories and the percentages are set for us, seventy five, eighteen. You can see the percentage column there. And that's what we're dictated to spend. So seventy five percent of what we do has to be marketing. I mean, otherwise, why are we doing it right? So you can see what was budgeted there and then what was actually spent. So we really, you know, we're we're almost, you know, right on target. Budgeted seven, ten, we were under that just by a little bit there. You can see seven oh nine. So I feel like, you know, the budget was pretty, pretty on target there. This is a, this is then kind of that look forward. We're going to kind of waffle back and forth just a little bit in in the budget slides. We're kind of keeping those together. So last slide was twenty two, twenty three. This slide is twenty three, twenty four. So again, you can see those percentages. So again, you know, we're going to budget accordingly based on, you know, you know, what we're required to spend our money on. And you can see our budget assessment was seven hundred and thirty one thousand, three hundred dollars for this year that we're currently in. And this is how our budget came out as we are in our current year and we are on track. We're not sharing those numbers today. That'll be next year where we're at in this year, but we are on track and you know, review that with our board, of course, each month. This is a, I think, a really great slide to to help people and not only the council, but to others to understand too, the impact that tourism has in our city, particularly with the hotels. So it shows the TID assessment and then the TOT. So the hotels collect the three percent assessment from from their guests. That amounted to six hundred and eighty two thousand, two hundred and seventy six for last year. And then TOT, the other tax, TID is the assessment, TOT is the tax, over two million, two million, two seventy five in TOT money. So it, you know, I think it behooves us to keep marketing the hotels because that, you know, is is great income to come into the city. So the six eighty two, you know, of course, is what we have to work with our marketing money. And then, of course, TOT is, you know, city, city money. As as you well know, I feel like I'm speaking to the audience a little bit as well. So as the presentation, I don't mean to, you guys know all of that. I know that. All right. Economic impact, I'm going to actually bring up, we this year hired Dean Runyon and Associates to do an economic impact report. So we can really see where spending is coming in into Pleasant Hill. And so I'm going to bring up my Director of Sales and Marketing, Viola New Bay. And she is going to present the next set of slides, which are talking about economic impact, but also go a little bit deeper into the marketing efforts that we've made in the last year and that we're currently in as well. So it's just the forward.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. So I'm Viola New Bay, and I am the Director of Sales and Marketing for State Pleasant Hill for the last three years. The Dean Runyon Associates Report is a report that all DMOs use, although they use various others. But it kind of measures impact into the city from a DMO's perspective. A DMO is the Destination Marketing Organization, which is what we call in our world. This impact report measured twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. This is what you see. So basically, the summary here says, in totality, in the middle, you'll see that tourism brought in ninety nine point six million dollars into the city of Pleasant Hill. And then the breakdown there, it measures the number of jobs, what was spent on accommodation, and what was direct direct visitors spending. How do they measure this? They measure it based on credit card or debit card usage. So they track that. They don't track anything that's cash. So there's excess that we don't even know about. But all of this is just tracked based on Mastercard, Visa, Amex, anything that is online. Directly into Pleasant Pleasant Hill, visitor spending was twenty five million dollars into hotels, which is at the top there. I wish there was a pointer, but it's twenty five million dollars. Into arts, entertainment was about thirteen million. So we have both twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one comparison. In food services, you have about thirty one million that was spent in twenty twenty two. In food stores, which tends to be the supermarkets, three million was spent by visitors who had visited us in hotels in in three million dollars. And then transport and gas transactions were tracked at eleven million dollars. And then retail sales were sixteen million dollars. So the totality comes into ninety nine point six million. You'll see the greatest spend of this is really when tourists come in, they the the accommodation is minimal. The greatest spend is into our into our local businesses. The Smith Travel Research Report is a report that measures our performance against other cities or other hotels. So we try to gauge how we are doing in terms of occupancy. Occupancy is the how do I explain it? The measure of 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 occupancy of a hotel, right? And then ADR stands for average daily room rate, which is the spend per rate. And then RevPA is revenue per available room. This first report here is in comparison to our primary primary competitor set, which is Walnut Creek Concord, San Ramon, Pleasanton, and Dublin. In occupancy, which is the first column there, twenty twenty two, you'll see we're sitting at seventy eight percent. Last year, we were at seventy one percent. We were growing. Last year, actually, we represented this, we were actually growing, we were at about sixty percent. During COVID, we're at forty percent. So we're really gaining our figures back up. ADR, we had a hundred and fifty one dollars point eighty six in average room rate. Our highest competitor is Walnut Creek. We beat them in occupancy, but they beat us in average room rate. But what really counts is RevPA, which is revenue per available room, which is a hundred and eighteen dollars. Also, quick to note is that right at the end, it tells us the inventory. So you'll see that Pleasant Hill doesn't have the largest number of rooms in comparison to our competitor cities. And yet we're smashing it in terms of revenue and rate against them. I added another slide because this year we we decided to add the gateway cities, which is San Francisco and Oakland, which is right there at the bottom. They're still struggling, but we have to measure ourselves when we're doing marketing and sales because they are the gateway cities. Traffic comes in mainly from them. So whatever happens there tends to impact us. So you'll see that San Francisco is sitting at an average about sixty four point three percent. And Oakland is at sixty two percent. Their rate is at two hundred and forty two dollars for city of San Francisco. But when you look at what it used to be, they used to average about four hundred dollars. So they're still struggling, even though it's two hundred and forty two. So key achievements for the last year, we continued the What If campaign, working with our DMO, our parent company, which is Visit California, and San Francisco Travel and Expedia. The What If campaign was launched during COVID. And during COVID to twenty twenty two, it generated about one point three million dollars to our hotels. It kept our hotels going. This campaign was the last phase, which is phase four. That was from February to January this year. And these are the results. And this campaign has now finally closed. The results are broken down by what each hotel received in revenue via the Expedia connectivity, what the ADR average room rate was, the number of room nights. But in totality, you'll see at the at the bottom, both campaigns generated about six hundred and eighty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars. Our website is our key marketing platform. We have about forty five thousand visitors that come in annually into our website, and then they track local businesses or accommodation. There's been an increase when we look at analytics of four hundred and seventy five percent increase in organic, which means we're not paying for visitors. People are coming in mainly, and you'll see a hundred and twenty four at the end there, partner referrals. Partner referrals. That means that they left our website and went into art and wine, to blues and brews to we have the statistics and analytics that we look look at on a monthly basis. And we have a report that shows us which businesses they're clicking through to. So it's a big gateway for our local businesses when people visit. Community engagement, as you know, Trish started with us last year, and her key role has been around community engagement. My role being more on the marketing side. In terms of sponsorships, we spent about eight thousand, two hundred dollars sponsoring different events around the city. But also in social media boosting, we spent about seven thousand, five hundred dollars supporting any events that are in the city and actually boosting them for more people to for visibility. Another slide on community engagement. Just there at the end, I wanted to introduce the two interns. So last year, the year before last, some of you might have met Hano. We started working in partnership with DVC and looking at internships. So this year we have two other interns, that is Faith. And that's Miranda. And they're here with us until the end of the year. So we continue our partnership with DVC in bringing in young talent that is looking to grow in marketing or in hospitality. Miranda is in film and production, so she's been helping me create a marketing campaign called It's a Dog's World, as well as I Love Pleasant Hill. And Faith is in marketing, so she's almost my mini number two. Sales. Sales wise, this year, we attended ten trade shows, seven conferences, and one annual board meeting for DMOs. These are key for us to be in attendance. For instance, next year, March, we are in 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 negotiation for a bike and a marathon challenge that is coming into Walnut Creek and ourselves. That's going to be nine hundred bedrooms over three days. That is major revenue generation. So this is where we get all these opportunities and then convert them to the hotels. So before looking forward, if there's any questions, I don't know if this is the time, but I'll I'll keep moving on. So looking forward to twenty 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 three, we've already started with some of our activities here in April because our fiscal year starts in April. Our key focus is a strategic five year plan, growth plan, brand enhancement. So we're looking at changing our name from State Pleasant Hill, which has been very confusing to some people, to Visit Pleasant Hill, which is what a lot of the DMOs are. It's it's very clear when a guest is looking online. Visit Pleasant Hill makes sense. That is for visitors. So we'll be changing that in the next sort of few months. We've already implemented some brand initiatives, our our social media, which is about forty five thousand followers on Instagram. We've already changed that. We've got the domain. And so we're starting to work on the branding. We've also employed a Public Relations Officer, Molly, who is local, and she's been working with Trish and myself, both on community engagement, local initiatives, as well as campaigns. And this is really to raise the brand of Pleasant Hill now to more of the of the larger media around the United States. So as you can see, the dog, I think Matthew met him. We we brought my dog, Chaka, during Blues and Brews. We're shooting a campaign called It's a Dog's World, and he's been just reviewing Pleasant Hill as a city, as a dog friendly city. So we'll be launching that in the next month. Part of the rebrand that will take us until April, January to twenty twenty four. And this is really just the key steps of that rebrand. That cover there is the That cover there is the new uh, visitor guide. Some of you have seen the last visitor guide, we are doing a two-year visitor guide, and that is coming out in the next couple of weeks, and that will be for until twenty twenty five. Some other key activities, community marketing campaigns. So we've launched the I Love Pleasant Hill Passport. Uh, I know some of you have signed up on that, and that is just really engaging businesses. And you'll see, if you go into the hotels, they have key cards. So as you check into the hotel, they have QR codes, and it pushes the local people, or it also pushes the visitors to then go and visit hotel, our, our local businesses. It's a Dog's World, I've just mentioned. And then another campaign in early twenty twenty four is I Belong Here and the Future Leaders, working with DVC. We'll be looking at a compreh, a comprehensive website refresh, and also continuing to uh, foster some stronger relationships with DVC. We're working with Live Nation, because they use the Concord Pavilion. So we've now been negotiating with them to do some partnership. We're working with NBC in terms of doing some videography here and featuring us on some news i, uh, items. JSX Airlines, we've already partnered with them, and we want to continue that partnership, and the rest are listed. Some new collateral um, that we're working on, we're actually working on eighteen pieces of new collateral that will be for the long term. Just listed some here, which is the visitor guide for the two years. Uh, working in partnership with the DVC, uh, we've come up with a D, a DVC sports guide. So every time there's visitor teams, they get a sports guide about where to eat, what to do within Pleasant Hill. Also with DVC, our partnership has now allowed us to both have website links, so teams can book into our hotels before they even arrive. As well as their international student guides is something that we've created. A paw guide is for the, for the dog, dog lovers. And then uh, one key one that is not showing here, oh, no, I can see it here. We're working on the neighborhood maps, the State Pleasant Hill neighborhood maps. So we're working with Zach and the Chamber as part of the committee in helping us create a, a State Pleas, as a Pleasant Hill map. This is uh, I Love Pleasant Hill. The campaign runs August twenty three until twenty twenty four. And then It's a Dog's World campaign also runs until end of twenty twenty four. Thank you very much. I don't know if this is the time for questions, but thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody have any questions?
Just a general comment, I, you know, I know we're competitive with our neighbors, so it's nice to see that we're in first place on occupancy rates. So good job for all you're doing, because it definitely shows, and, and it's not even that close. So great job to all the proprietors that are here tonight, and general managers, and what you do to market that. So I think what you do at the sites and then through marketing is true testament. So appreciate all you're doing and keep up good work out there, so. That was my general comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pylon, Akelids? Councilmember Noak?
Uh, no, it was a great presentation. I appreciate that, lots of, lots of stuff going on, I think that's great. Um, and love the number of partnerships, because I think that's so important since Pleasant Hill is not necessarily a destination place for people to come for vacation. Nothing against Pleasant Hill, but it's, it's not. So, you know, the partnerships are super important, so I think that's, that's really great. Um, I do have one question though. So you, you had that eighteen percent cap on admin, and I know this year you went over by a bit. Can, can you just give me an explanation on what that was from? Sorry, I'm the numbers person up here.
No worries, no worries. And uh, yeah, I mean, we, we have um, fifteen percent leeway. The Management District Plan does give us fifteen percent to, to kind of go outside of that as needed. I think year one, it was, you know, what, part of my job was getting us set up as a, a organization. So it was getting benefits, it was getting uh, you know, bonuses in place, getting, you know, that was appropriate. It was getting uh, payroll taxes and getting a payroll system set up. So it was, the budget was put in place, and I think some of those things we, we didn't really know, you know, the full extent of what things were going to cost. So some of those were benefit options that, you know, we started a budget and did a budget before we had those figures in place. So we did go over a bit, but not to the point where it went outside of our fifteen percent. So it was mostly in the benefits, bonus, insurance, taxes, those type of things that were hard to predict before we actually took, took that on. So we were guesstimating a little bit, you know, I think when that first budget came out.
But your budget for next year is thirty four thousand dollars less than your actuals this year. So were they one-time fees? Because it was one sixty five and it went, drops down to one thirty one in your budget for the upcoming year, so.
Right. Well, I had actuals to budget with, so while we may have been over in uh, that area, I mean, I, I would have to get back to you unless I have the budget in front of me. I, I hate to kind of pontificate about what, what that might have been. I'm certainly happy to get back to you with real specifics on that.
Yeah, just.
Unless I have those numbers in front of me, I'm just not going to be able to, to suggest. So I'm more than happy to get back to you on, on the administrative portion. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I think just to Councilmember Noak's point, our understanding of the reserve is to supplement for, you know, unexpected increases as opposed to being just channeled to increase a particular category that is already limited to a particular percentage. But, but having said all that, I think you guys are doing a tremendous job.
Thank you.
The level of creativity, um, professionalism, quality of graphics, quality of campaigns, exponentially better than uh, your predecessors.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, and thank you, Viola.
Thank you.
And the team you both have assembled.
You can't tell, we enjoy what we do. We really do, and we're a great team.
Councilmember No, uh, Chess?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Flaherty, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, in terms of your um, your, your webs, your website, you know, you said that your website marketing is, that everyone's going to your website. Where, who, where are they coming from? Where do you think, if you were to give me like your top three kind of people, where are they?
Hello.
Where are they? I'm just curious who those people are, that, that, that audience.
Um, so it's, it's divided by day stayers, day visitors. I tend to be around from Sacramento or the, me, the larger Bay Area like San Jose. When it's overnight stays, our feeder market is Los Angeles, San Diego, Phoenix, and Las Vegas. We actually have started to see statistics from Denver and Dallas, um, and a little bit from New York. So uh, Visit Ca, uh, Visit California and Brand USA have been pushing major marketing. They spend like twenty three million dollars international drive markets. So this is where our business is coming from.
Okay, thank you. Other question I had, uh, is you, you, you mentioned partnerships. And as someone who's new here to, to this role, I'm curious if you could explain, maybe people in the crowd, and people listening don't know, like, for example, let's just take that JSX partnership. How, could you talk a little bit about like, what that partnership entails?
So uh, what we've been approaching is um, organizations that we know are coming into this Bay Area. So uh, JSX fly into Buchanan Airport. So we approached them to say we wanted to do shoot, uh, uh, shoot a dog campaign. What that entails is that us either negotiating for barter trade, let's say for tickets, so we don't have to pay, they get marketing, we get marketing out of it. Um, so it depends, it's like a sponsorship really, so it depends on what each entity is looking to get out of it. Um, all our partnerships have been driven around people, organizations that either bring business to us, so they're in tourism, um, or um, have organic guests themselves. So with JSX, um, what we did is we flew the dog in from, from LA, and it was photographed and videoographed from the, from point A right into here, and then fly, flying him out again uh, with JSX and even in, within the plane. So now we're negotiating on who uses what material. Now, the concept of using those guys, because currently we've been talking about Amtrak, they have bigger budgets and then they have bigger audiences, which we can never afford. So when we targeting them is we actually want to utilize their audience to actually do our marketing.
Yeah, no, I could see how leveraging a, a bigger audience's website would, would make sense. Last, the last question I have, and this is maybe more of a point. Um, you know, I think a lot of, you know, and I, when I think of this, um, I think of, you know, you guys are, are working off of events that are here in Pleasant Hill, right? A lot of it, and a lot of it is, what, you know, could be graduations or what have you. It was struck me, it was, it was eight thousand dollars that was in sponsorship money. Um, and then when I, and I look at the marketing budget, I mean, is that something that you plan to expand upon? Because it, it didn't seem, because really, I mean, the, the, the events that we have here in Pleasant Hill are kind of the lifeblood, I would imagine, of what you, kind of how you market off of, uh, you know, bringing people here for these events. And then I see eight thousand dollars, and I'm just kind of curious if you could talk to, if that's going to expand going forward.
So the totality of that is actually fifteen, because the social media spending. So for instance, for Blues and Brews, we spend like three and a half thousand dollars. We met with Blues and Brews, they don't have budgets to pull in people from anywhere else. Um, so we do the marketing, which is Facebook ads, and then we, we pay, we have to pay for the Facebook ads, right? To draw people coming in. So the totality of that was about fifty thousand. However, we work under a, uh, an act that says that we cannot spend any more money outside of XYZ if it's not tourism-driven. So it can't be just for sponsorships, for instance, right? Um, it has, we have to showcase that whatever money we're spending, the marketing is for, is to drive tourism coming into the city, rather than, let's say, promoting local events.
But isn't that tourism, I mean, isn't that, that event tourism that would bring people in, I?
They're local events, so think about it as a local event versus an event that's going to bring in traffic to spend the night in the city.
Okay.
So, eh, for example, Raccoon Park did a, did a, a study this year, and they showed where the people were coming in from. I think it was a, what, hot map or something, and they got, you know, paid to get those numbers. They're not coming from anywhere where people are staying overnight. So we have to be really careful that we're not just throwing money at local events that really aren't benefiting our hotels, which is who our payer is. So everything we do is always with that in mind, not only to, you know, benefit our payers, but also to present, part of why we do do local sponsorship is we want to present a great city for people to come to. Sue mentioned, eh, Pleasant Hill probably isn't the tourist capital of the world, but we want to present a great, you know, the social media, a great website that shows, wow, this is a great city. Look at all the things that they have. They've got a, you know, some festivals during the summer, they've got great restaurants that are, you know, showcasing, they've got great hotels that accept dogs, so, oh my gosh, I'm going to travel there with my dog. So it, it's actually not, our main focus is to, to sponsor local events just because of that, because they're not really um, hotel-driven events. So that's kind of our, our drive is really, you know, more marketing with trade shows, we're going to go to because we can find out businesses that are coming to this area. The marathon, the, you know, the bike race, different things that are coming. Those would be, you know, m, more focused for us, because it's going to bring outside business to stay in the hotel.
So something more like uh, Fleet Week is what you're saying?
Right.
You guys would make more of an investment in bringing people here for something like Fleet Week, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Rin, any comment, question? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been our pleasure, thanks.
We accept the. Now, uh, do we have any public comment on this? Um, open public comment, comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Uh, if you're on Zoom, the meeting ID and passcode are being broadcast right now. Is there anyone here in chambers who wishes to offer public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll turn to our virtual audience.
There are no hands raised.
And we'll now close public comment, thank uh, no longer Stay Pleasant Hill.
Visit Pleasant.
Visit Pleasant. Visit Pleasant, stay and vi, stay and vi, visit and stay. Uh, how's that? Uh, we'll turn to item ten point two, this is a public hearing uh, to introduce an ordinance, amending the accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
We have to do an action, accept the report.
I don't think it's a roll call vote or anything, it's just, do we need to have a motion on, on this informational report?
The action item is to accept the report.
All right, well, I will make a motion. I'll take a roll call to accept.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the Pleasant Hill Tourism Improvement District Annual Report for Fiscal Year twenty twenty three, twenty four.
I'm happy to second, I, I do want follow-up by answers on the, on the numbers though. So, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Noak, to accept.
Noak?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Uh, thank you. Item ten point two, is a public hearing to introduce the ordinance, amending the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, section eighteen point twenty point oh nine five of the municipal code. I'll invite Andrew Schiflett to provide a report, welcome Andrew.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, the proposal before you tonight, uh, may look familiar. Um, this is a, a proposal to amend our ADU ordinance, which we would formally codify the previous urgency ordinance that was uh, passed by you, or adopted, I should say, Order Number nine sixty, back in December of twenty twenty two. Uh, we're also going to take this opportunity while we're formally codifying the ordinance to add a few minor revisions to it, primarily in the definition section. Uh, again, just some background, in December fifth, twenty twenty two, City Council adopted an urgency ordinance uh, that was in compliance with recently adopted state law that made changes to ADU laws and JADUs, those are junior accessory dwelling units and accessory dwelling units. Uh, this year in August twenty twenty two, uh, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed ADU ordinance amendment and adopted Resolution seventeen dash twenty-three recommending that the City Council adopt the ordinance as proposed by staff. At that hearing, no members of the public, or no public comments were received. Uh, our revisions that we're proposing, uh, the first of two is to revise the following definition. Uh, accessory structure means a structure that is accessory and incidental to a primary dwelling on the same lot. Currently, the word primary is not in there, and it helps to clarify that the accessory structure is in relation to a primary residential structure. And uh, the proposal, uh, number two is to add the following definition, and that's the definition for the word attached, as it's found in the ADU section. Attached means a structure that shares a common wall with the primary residential dwelling unit on a lot, uh, sorry, structure. A structure that is connected to the primary residential dwelling solely by a breezeway shall not be considered attached. And I think that differentiating between a breezeway and an actual physical attachment of a, two dwellings is the important part there, and something that's come up with our conversations and reviews of ADUs over the past year. And with that, our recommendation is that the council conduct the public hearing, receive any public input, and introduce the proposed ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Andrew, can you just take us through the rationale for the detached uh, versus attached? And what effect that has on the type of ADU that could be allowed?
Sure. Uh, so right now, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, are allowed to be attached or detached from the primary dwelling on a property. Junior accessory dwelling units, however, are only permitted within the existing primary dwelling structure. And so there are, are some homes in Pleasant Hill that have attachments, maybe by a breezeway, a roof structure, where a garage, for instance, is not technically attached to the house in the way that the state and the city envision an attached dwelling. And so we're just differentiating that uh, in order to be clar, uh, classified as attached and to be allowed a junior ADU, it actually has to be within the primary dwelling.
Can I just follow up on that? So within meaning not just an attached wall. I mean, if you, if, if it's an attached wall, but you can't get from the primary residence to the ADU, it just has a wall that's shared, is that still a JADU? Or does it have to be really within the primary residence? And therefore you have to be able to walk from the primary residence to the JADU through a shared wall?
Sure, that's a good question. So a junior ADU uh, needs to be within the primary dwelling, and it can also be a structure that's attached to the dwelling and then in the future converted to a junior ADU. A junior ADU can share internal access with a dwelling, a primary dwelling, but it's not obligated to, yeah.
So I guess, uh, keep going, the difference between a junior accessory dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit is?
Pardon me?
What's the difference between a JADU and an ADU?
A junior ADU just has uh, additional limits on size, so it can't be more than, I believe, five hundred and twenty square feet in size. It can share sanitary facilities and cooking facilities with the primary dwelling. However, it ne, at least needs to have an efficiency kitchen within it. Um, an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, needs to have everything set up for a complete independent living. So it has to have its own bathroom, has to have its own full kitchen, et cetera.
Is there a minimum size of an ADU?
No.
Thank you. Other questions? Nothing further to your report, then we'll open public comment on this. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Uh, is there anyone here in the chambers that wishes to provide comment on this item? Turning to our virtual audience, is there anyone?
There are no hands raised.
All right. Um, well, having nobody here in the audience and nobody online, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion to introduce the ordinance.
I'll make the motion to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Noak and a second by the Vice Mayor to introduce the ordinance. May we have the roll call?
Noak?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes, thank you, Andrew. Uh, item ten point three, it's a public hearing to introduce the ordinance amending our municipal code, chapter eighteen point six seven relating to wireless telecommu- wireless telecommunications facilities and related amendments uh related to that. All right, so item ten point three, Haley Crawford, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, tonight I'm here to introduce um an ordinance to you with some uh amendments to our existing wireless telecommunications facilities. Um, the amendments uh are related to several sections, but primarily focus on our wireless telecommunications facilities chapter. These are all um in response to address recent uh federal and state laws to make sure that we are still in compliance. There's also some related amendments as part of this uh to several other sections of our zoning ordinance um related to zoning permits, definitions, um and then our approval authority for use permits. And so I'll go into detail about what each of those entails. Um, before I go into uh the kind of details of each of these, I'll also just mention that uh the Planning Commission did review all these proposed amendments back in August um and uh recommended um that City Council approve them as proposed tonight. Uh, so I've organized the am- the amendments into kind of two groups. The first one um are simple clarifications and cleanup. A lot of these are just direct results of the uh federal and state law. Um, starting with updating some terms and definitions, there are several um either outdated terms or terms that are no longer used in uh the uh relevant laws that we are either eliminating or updating. One of the more important ones is clarifying the definition of substantial change and that's used for the section sixty-four oh nine modifications. Uh, so certain permits are certain applications if there's no substantial change. Um, then there's a specific uh and more um kind of efficient process for those. Um, another clarification that we needed to make was separating out um the process for wireless communication facilities uh within the public right-of-way versus within public property. So the public right-of-way, those applications would be subject to an encroachment permit and those would be reviewed uh and issued by our city engineer. And then on uh publicly owned property, those uh applications would be subject just to the same process as those on privately owned property. So we wanted to clarify that difference there. Um, another change we made was simply just eliminating our application submittal requirements from the ordinance since they live uh on our city's website and our application um packets that we have for all of these. That also just makes it uh easier to update or, or clarify as needed. Um, and then we currently, as our practice, uh require a zoning permit for those um modifications that qualify under section sixty-four oh nine. Those are the ones that don't have a substantial change. Um, but it wasn't codified in our ordinance and so we're simply just um acknowledging that a zoning permit is required for those. Um, and as I mentioned, we are eliminating um and kind of clarifying our definitions in the ordinance. And then as part of that, we also want to do that same for our um general definition section for the entire zoning ordinance. And so we don't want to have any duplicates. So we've eliminated any definitions that are already contained in the wireless ordinance and those will just remain in that chapter. Um, and then the second group of the ordinance amendments are related to process modifications. So one of the big things that the state and federal laws do is they establish what's called shot clocks or these are just review timeframes that the city is held to. And within these cl- shot clocks, um, the city has to review, make a decision and issue any permits on all of these. So we need to make sure our process allows us to do all of that within those timeframes. Um, and so as part of that, we looked at um the different process for all of these different applications, uh, starting with um those applications within the right-of-way currently. And we have uh objective standards um and guidelines that are, the applicants are required to follow. Uh, the um current process is that the city engineer is responsible for reviewing these. Any exceptions to these would require to go into Planning Commission. In order to streamline that, um, we're proposing that the city engineer be the uh deciding and determining um person to review and approve those. Uh, we're also introducing a minor use permit process. Uh, currently, we do not have a minor use permit that could apply to wireless telecommunications facilities. Um, and so we're introducing this for the certain small wireless um applications under a sixty or a ninety day review. Um, this allows the zoning administrator to approve these specific applications and allows us to maintain um and to meet those deadlines. Um, I'll talk about the kind of general appeal process for all of these in a minute. Um, but it does eliminate uh and kind of streamline that process. Um, and then, as I mentioned, the uh other big piece that we did was look at the appeals process for all of these. So currently, as I mentioned, these applications, either a encroachment permit that the city engineer would be approving or a zoning permit that our zoning administrator would be approving. Um, if Planning Commission, you know, if those were appealed, they would go to Planning Commission. And if that decision was appealed, it would then go to City Council. So there was existing, we have a multi-step appeal process, which is hard to um, you know, if that were to, to be exercised, it would be hard to meet a sixty or ninety day timeframe. And so instead, we're proposing that all decisions, no matter what the originating decision maker was, be appealed directly to City Council and that's to eliminate that multi-step process. Um, and I'll just note that those uh section sixty-four oh nine modifications, those applications are not appealable. Um, and so with that, um, I will just note that tonight we are recommending uh that you receive public comment on this item and introduce the ordinance. Um, we also have uh via Zoom, I believe, uh Bennett Givens with BBK, who's here um as well to answer any of your questions. Isn't I? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Haley. Um, I just have a question about, we'll start with co-location.
Hmm.
And particularly the, the new spelling. Uh, so uh, seriously, is the word structure a defined term anywhere in our ordinance?
It is in the, in our uh general definition section.
But I don't see it here.
You're just seeing the wireless ordinance first.
Right, so structure is defined elsewhere.
Yes, it is.
Because, I don't know, structure is used um liberally throughout the entire wireless, but it has different meanings depending which subsection you're referring to, which I found a little bit confusing. Uh, particularly like base equipment, uh, you know, a structure but not a tower. I guess a tower could be a structure elsewhere, right? And so I was just curious whether structure was defined. Um, and is that in the staff report anywhere, the general definitions?
The specific definition, because we're not proposing to amend it, was not included. Um, but I can definitely take a look at making sure that that definition is applicable. Um, and, and seeing if it could be incorporated here or would need to be modified.
All right. Um, and is my understanding of co-location still the same? That co-location refers to adding a new facility to an existing structure that already has a wireless facility on it?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Uh, Haley. Yeah, hi, this is Bennett Givens uh here from Best Fest in Krieger. Uh, I have worked with Haley uh in developing the ordinance. Co-location uh is m- more broad than that. Uh, it would include the uh attachment of a wireless facility onto an existing structure. It need not have an existing facility already on that structure.
Yeah, that's what I thought I read, which fe- I found confusing. Was that, has that always been the definition of co-location? I mean, it seems back in my Planning Commission days, co-location was limited to adding a new facility to an existing structure with the facility.
Yeah, that's the general original definition, but it's expanded over time due to uh FCC uh usage of the term uh to more generally apply to any attachment to an existing uh structure. Not, not in the narrow case of just adding to a, a, an existing wireless facility site.
Uh, then either Haley or Bennett, could you just address the, it seems like there's a, a removal of some discretion at the local level as we're coming into compliance with the federal regulations that we have less discretionary review of the look and feel of a, a cellphone or a cell tower?
Yeah, uh Haley, I'll take the first stab at that one. Uh, this is an area of substantial federal preemption. Um, so the city's role is really establishing time, place and manner uh of your wireless facilities and design and location standards. Um, and so I, I think the other aspect too, as Haley had mentioned in her presentation, is there a number of federal shot clocks that apply? Uh, the state legislature has also added uh deemed granted remedies uh recently with the adoption of AB uh three fifty-seven. Uh, we have the net effect in the state of California of having a deemed approved remedy for all wireless uh application types. So if the city uh misses the shot clock, the application would be deemed approved by uh operation of law uh without further action by the city. Uh, so a lot of the changes that you see before you today are to address uh these uh FCC shot clocks and to avoid a deemed granted remedy by accelerating the review process where feasible.
Right, it seems to me the shot clock uh language or is, is based upon the Fed's perception that the local municipalities have been sitting on these applications and trying to control the deployment of the facilities by just not moving them very quickly. So that's why you have the shot clock and the shortening of the shot clock.
Um, yes.
Uh, do we have any, have, have we had that type of uh, you know, blockage in the pipeline here in Pleasant Hill? Or, uh, I mean, I haven't seen a wireless application come through City Council in years. Uh, you know, maybe it never gets past planning.
Yeah, we, I mean, a, a majority of the ones we see qualify for that section sixty-four oh nine. You know, if those are eligible facilities, they're not doing anything that would trigger a substantial change. That's probably the most that we see right now.
Yeah, and the one thing I would add to that Haley is for section sixty-four oh nine requests, if the uh application qualifies, the city has no discretion. It must approve um a- as uh required by federal law.
Thank you. Pass it to the council members. Anyone have any comments?
No, I remember this headache from the last time we went through this. And sixty-four oh nine for some reason.
Uh, anything further Haley or Bennett on your presentation?
No, thank you.
All right, then we'll open public comment on this. I'll invite public, uh, anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this item. Seeing none, we'll turn to our virtual audience.
There's no one on Zoom.
Right. Uh, seeing no one in the chambers and no one online, we'll close public comment and bring this back to council for discussion and/or a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Oh, I'll make the motion to uh, you know, that we don't have a whole lot of options here, so um, but I think it's important that we comply so that we don't end up with a whole lot of things being done. Um, so I, I like the streamlined um approval process because I think that will help us meet those shot clocks, shot clocks. Um, so I appreciate that. So I, with that, I will um move the ordinance.
And before, um, and I, I, I think maybe it's just important to reiterate to our, our vast listening audience um that the prior ordinance and this one really is to bring us in compliance with changes in the law since uh the last time we adopted the ordinance and um just getting, getting us um properly situated. So that's why there's not a lot of discussion here at the council level about, oh, is this a good idea or a bad idea? We have no say really, other than comply or, or be jeopardy for not being in.
We had a lot of discussion the last go around on why things were being done and, and, and in depth. And we've realized as a result of that, this is a quicker discussion.
Yeah. Uh, so with that, we have a, a motion from Councilmember Noak.
And I'll, I concur to Councilmember Noak's comments and second the motion.
And a second from the Vice Mayor. Can we have the roll call, please?
Noak?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. Uh, moving to item ten point four is to adopt a resolution accepting the bid and awarding a construction contract to Grade Tech Inc. for the twenty twenty-three intersection and crosswalk improvement project. Uh, invite Ryan Cook to provide a report. Hello, Ryan.
Hello, good, good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, tonight I'll be introducing the uh twenty twenty-three intersection and crosswalk improvements project uh for award. To start off with a little bit, uh, some background and about the project. Uh, the project is uh, what you have in front of you is the nine locations where the city currently offers crossing guard services. Um, this project covers seven of those locations. Uh, the bottom two, I'll go in a little bit more detail uh later on. Um, but they're uh scattered throughout the city. Um, the proposed improvements that we're looking to do is a combination of new flashing LED stop signs with flashing beacons above that. Those would be pedestrian activated uh during normal hours uh seven days a week. And then during school hours, they will be on a timer to automatically back, be activated to help alert motorists of um activity in crosswalks. In addition, we'll be doing uh more enhanced ladder crosswalks as well as speed humps at the stop signs as well. Um, now onto the two at the bottom that were not included as part of this project, Contra Costa Boulevard and Ellenwood Drive and Monument Boulevard and Buskirk Avenue. These two intersections were a little bit unique in that they're signalized intersections. Uh, and they, they were included in the original uh project when they came to you before for the funding. Um, after we went through the design, it was noticed that it's going to be uh very expensive uh to do all the proposed upgrades. And so we had to pull them out before we put it out to bid. With that said, uh, these two intersections are located or are allocated as under funding through the countywide smart signals program. So they're, uh, they are scheduled to be upgraded uh in the future under that. But with that said, we are looking to install some of the uh improvements uh as soon as possible, primarily with the dynamic no right turn signals. Um, those will be added, we want to say as part of, not as part of this project, but uh in the same timeframe, uh, we're looking at alternative funding sources for that. Uh, and primarily, it will most likely be done through our uh signal maintenance contract with Contra Costa County. Um, we've been in discussion with them to have those installed separately. Um, and then the future s- signal upgrades with the controller and uh detection upgrades will come at a later date through that uh smart signal project. So with that, the city, we opened bids on September seventh uh for this project. We received nine total bids, I'm sorry, seven total bids. Uh, with the low bid being seven hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents by Grade Tech Inc. Um, this came in just over the engineer's estimate. Um, as you can see, the average was pretty high overall. Uh, we count most of that to labor costs uh and in addition to the equipment costs and actual materials are expensive as well, but um most of it comes down to labor. Um, but with that, we did receive one bid that was uh within budget and they are an experienced public course contractor. Um, they have, they're ready to start work uh pretty much immediately. Uh, they have already signed our city standard contract with no modifications and they've already provided us with all the required bonds. And so with that fiscal impact, um, funding sources that was, came before you in May and was authorized, uh, combination of measure K, sidewalk maintenance and pedestrian bicycle programs out of our CIP. Um, the expected project expenses, uh, construction contract, as mentioned, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, we have a twelve percent contingency added in there for potential addition, additional changes. Uh, and then city engineering staff time uh to keep it under budget uh is all located there. And so with that, staff recommends the City Council adopt a resolution to accept the bid and award a construction contract for the twenty twenty-three intersection and crosswalk improvement project, project oh five twenty-three, and authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Grade Tech Inc.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, Councilmember Rin, Vice Mayor.
Do you have any, still council member Noak's questions? Cause I need to sit on every transportation committee that there is in the county. Um, and the one time I, I got to sub for you, I saw a, um, what was admitted was like the, the monument Buzzkirk one for this one. And I, and I believe I saw there was a rendition of a potential monument six eighty kind of realignment in county plans for transportation, smart roads.
Good, I am so.
I know. I'm glad this is being recorded because I was there and uh, I'm just kidding. But uh, that there is going to be a general realignment process and under that process will probably be something to do that. So even though it's very expensive and things, I think the county has stuff in the works, which may help us out a lot. And then kind of a whole monument corridor.
And then kind of a whole monument corridor realignment for the smarter future visions. And I'll defer to Councilmember Noah because I didn't want to steal your question or your comment on that, but I just wanted to bring that up that there will be considerations that have already been discussed on a county level, I believe.
You did steal my comments.
Okay, go ahead then.
I do appreciate that. There has been work through Transpac for some realignment to improve bike and pedestrian, including some road changes in that area. And so it probably won't change the signal itself, but it will certainly change some of the traffic flow there. And bike and pet because the plan is to have a combination bike pet plan on the north side. And so you'll still get a lot of people crossing over that north side. But it'll be a little different alignment and the other part of the plan is taking off the eliminating the southbound six eighty entrance. So there, but that has to, that's going to need some grant funding at some point, so hopefully those changes. But I think the the county light system is in process and they've received a fairly sizable grant to work on on the, on the light, timing of the lights. And so that, that will be helpful. I don't know if Anthony's standing up, so if he's going to add additional comments to mine.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, you are correct. And we did apply for the grant to enhance the pet and bike facilities along Monument Corridor. And we are actually going to try again with the little expanded scope to score more points to, because the original estimate was about eight million dollars. So we definitely looking forward to, you know, winning that because it's going to be a great asset, not only for Concord and us and also all the shopping in and around Pleasant Hill. But the other one that Ryan mentioned is the countywide smart signal project that is currently under the initial design phase and we are going to come to council for agreement with the CCTA to implement that. So you will see that agreement come forward to you within a month.
I'll be on both sides of that one, huh? There was only one other thing I wanted to add and this is the lights at the intersections, right? You know, and I just want to emphasize the fact that the lights will stay on during school hours and that alone. When I've been driving through Lafayette, they've got those flashing lights all the time, which sort of detracts from I think their emphasis on when kids are present. It's on all the time. I think after a while, people will just stop paying attention to them because they're on all the time. So just really want to make sure they're on solely during, you know, school, beginning of school, end of school, and then by pedestrian triggered lights. So I just want to make sure we get that and not have them on all the time because they will lose their effectiveness.
Right now.
Yes, they will not be on all the time. They are only going to be activated via timer during the school pickup and drop off hours. And then they are, there's a pedestrian push button that's there. Most of the other ones that have been going in lately in Lafayette, Concord and everything, most of those are activated via like a radar microwave as cars approach.
Oh, all the time.
So it's, and sometimes the flashing is based upon how fast they're approaching. And so every car that comes up to it experiences the flashing stop sign. So we're taking a little bit different approach with this.
Okay, that's great because with the amount of traffic that goes down that way through Lafayette, they're always on. So it seems to be not as effective as I would like them to seem.
The only other comment, if I may, around that is we did have a public comment and I agree that some of those intersections around elementary schools, the kindergartners have something called early friends, late friends. So the early friends usually are with the normal school population, but the the class of kindergartners for the late friends will be arriving. And, you know, vice versa, the early friends leave earlier before the general school population. So just something to be cognizant of how we time those for school hours that we, you know, because a lot of the kindergartners do get dropped off and walk to school at that point.
And the Wednesday early releases.
True. So yeah, just, just start communication with the school district when we're doing that to kind of coordinate with them to make sure that they're flashing at the appropriate times too, that we're not missing those opportunities with certain characteristics around elementary schools as well.
Absolutely, yeah. No, and we have the ability to monitor that and modify and make adjustments as needed to best suit the needs of the schools.
Just want to make sure we're on it. Thank you.
Any other council comments or questions? Councilmember Chess?
Just quickly, I recall when we talked about this last time, there was some visibility issues around Boyd and Patterson in terms of being, you know, because there, there's a corner lot right there and being able to see as you're approaching. Is the, with this bid, are they going to handle that? Or is that as far as like if there's mitigation with residents or discussions or anything that things that have to be cut back in order to get full visibility, who would handle that in this, under this contract?
There is line items in the contract to handle pre-trimming and clearing growing of vegetation as well. And then, but anything that would impact a residential property would be, we'd work out with the property owner as well to coordinate with that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Then anything further on the presentation? Seeing none, we'll open public comment on this item. Does anyone here in the chambers wish to provide comment on this item? No hands raised, no cards presented. Anyone on Zoom?
No, no public comment on Zoom.
No one waiting on Zoom, no one waiting in chambers. We'll close public comment and bring this to council for discussion and a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Councilmember Noah.
I'll second it.
And a second from Councilmember Chess.
Noah?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Moving to item ten point five, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a design professional services agreement with Robert Nebalon Architects for the City Hall Pond Fountain Plaza Paving and Donor Memorial Rehabilitation Project. And to further approve the combining of the capital improvement projects for the City Hall Fountain renovation project with the City Hall Pond Plumbing System repairs. I understand Deidre Castillo? No, it's not.
I'm here as well as Deidre.
On behalf of Deidre Castillo is.
I'm going to start off and I'm going to pass that a difficult question to Deidre. Because she's a project manager. So good evening once again. So we are excited to bring this project in front of you because it's been anticipated and we have been looking forward to seeing some changes to have a lovely pond and fountain combination as well as the pavement restoration. So just to recap how we got here, so City Hall had a grand opening in nineteen ninety nine. With that, we hired a well famous architect, Charles Moore, to do the wonderful design which, you know, still lives on. And one of the characteristic that the concept they had was to come up with the ecologically balanced in a water body that lives within newly built City Hall. So it was a great concept and a great design, you know, that came along. But of course, with the design came some issues because, you know, being ecologically balanced and upward thinking, you know, we decided to use our groundwater to you know, fill the pond as well as the water features there. As well as when we did that project, we had some donations, you know, fundraising done for the pavement and we had six hundred and sixty four engraved tiles that were selected part of the donor and we only charged them twenty five dollars per tile to have their name on it. But the good part is that there was no agreement or in place that this will stay in forever. So if the council wanted to entertain another fundraising opportunity, you know, we can definitely look at that option as well. So the lake definitely was, Lake and the Fountain was not designed to support any wildlife whatsoever. But nevertheless, what we have is what we have. So we have about forty to fifty koi. And we even have a couple of bass. So if someone wants to fish, so there's an opportunity. Then we have about twenty five to forty turtles.
It's a wide range.
A wide range.
All the seasons.
Wild range of wild, you know, life, you know, we support at the City Hall here. And I'm not too sure it's how good Pleasant Hill is, is we are very highly nutritious water we have in ground. So that definitely has a lot of minerals that comes along with the water and gives us a little bit of trouble when it comes to the maintenance of the pond as well as the water feature. So as you have already seen and witnessed, our maintenance staff definitely struggles to remove all the sludges and the algae growth in both areas. So what, what I have here is you can see how the allergies have, you know, taken over and pretty much no matter what you do to the tiles, you know, no matter how you clean them, it definitely builds a right back because of the mineral content in the water. It's so high and it just supports growth. And what we have done in the past is we have done a lot of work to clean them, but it's always been a temporary fix. And the maintenance has been required a couple of times a week, even when you do them, it's never all the way through because of the depth of the water and how far you can reach to clean these sediments. It's quite a bit of task. And one of the deficiencies also we had is that we have a system that is kind of interconnected. So when the fountain is running, that's when we get an HVAC system working for our community center. If the fountain is not running, then, you know, you will not have any cold air coming into the community center. It's all tied together. And all the same water actually comes in to the pond, fountain and the wells. So it's a very difficult to separate them out. So what we are trying to do is come up with a better design as well as a better mechanical system and plumbing system to separate them out if we can. So that way we can treat some of the water and minimize the maintenance aspect to the tiles and make the water looks healthy and clean. So you can also see on the left hand side, the mineral deposit is pretty much blocking all the water. And you can see all the water feature that's pretty much non-existent because the pipes are pretty much clogged. No matter how much, how fast you pump it, you will never get any effects over there. So another problem that we had is the tiles. Not only we have some of the engraved tiles here, but one of the tiles we have chosen back then is a little bit of slippery. So they tend to breaking apart and also yes, been there for a while and it's passed their life cycle there. So maintenance staff keep replacing them or try to fill with the concrete just to avoid any trip hazard in the meantime. So we have done several projects throughout to upkeep the pond as well as the fountain. Back in two thousand eight, we did a project. Then two thousand eleven, we did a bigger project where we have added more skimmers. We introduced some trench filtration system and UV lighting. And, you know, the cost was about a hundred and eighty four thousand dollars even back in twenty eleven. But that's only short-lived because of the type of water that we have. It was very difficult to even control. So even two thousand twenty one, we tried to upsize the water pump and get rid of some of the booster pump that we had. But that only had a very minimal impact. So the new projects, which what we are excited for. So what we wanted to do was we come up with a project where we can rethink and reconfigure the entire plumbing and mechanical system as well as give a fresh new look to the entrance. So what we have went is we have went out to an RFP earlier and we had two architects provide a proposal to us and they had a bigger vision for the entire place. But unfortunately, the design itself was going to cost us about two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars. And the rough estimate was going to be about two to three million dollars to implement the initial thought process. So what we had to do was we had to go back to the drawing board and think of something that what we can work within the budget and come up with the design that actually complements the original designer's view. So part of that is what the council approved was a four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of our power fund for the fountain and a three ninety five our power fund for the pond. So as you can tell, initial proposal pretty extensive thought process, you know, we even have some public gathering area included at the entryway and recreating the entire concrete plaza area. But just because of the budget, we had a new design. Part of that is what we wanted to make sure was we were true to the original intent of the design. So interviewing a lot of architects and talking to a lot of BCJ and other architects in and around, we came up with another RFP out where we were lucky enough to come up with an architect that Robert Nebalon, who actually works with the foundation of the Charles Moore Foundation. So Kevin from the president of the Charles Moore Foundation will be working with Robert Nebalon to come up with a design that actually works with the original intent. As well as come up with a better mechanical and plumbing system to address the issues that we have. And also to come up with a better material for the fountain. So what we have in front of you is recommended for council action is authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Robert Nebalon for not to exceed thirty three thousand three hundred dollars and with the contingents of twenty, twenty percent of six thousand seven hundred totaling to forty thousand dollars. And also combining these two projects together because it's very difficult to separate them out because they are as a one whole project. So it would be much easier for the staff and also to construct as a one project. Before the questions, I do have the architect here who'll be happy to share his experience and vision with, you know, what he is willing to propose here. Our goal is to come up with a couple of renderings for the council to consider by end of this year or beginning of the next year for, to choose from. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions and I can also bring the Robert.
Are there any questions from Council for Anathan at this point?
Just generally, as part of the process, I know that originally wasn't designed to have animal life in our features. And I know that's kind of grown to be a a popular feature, especially amongst younger families to come down to City Hall and walk around and see the fish and turtles and occasional stork flying by or things like that. So I know obviously that'll be kind of a contentious thing as we progress with the design implementation. I'm just curious where the thoughts were around preservation of that or because of the organic matter and the hard water and those contributing factors that continually come up the system, so to speak. Where are we at with that? So it's kind of.
So that is one of the couple of thought processes we all had was tried to minimize or, you know, contain it in a smaller areas where we have like forty koi actually produce a lot of waste and discharge. So what we can do is to preserve it, we can actually relocate to a smaller pond area. Very likely or could be, it'll be, depends on the final design, but there is a smaller area behind the community center. It's a smaller area. It'll be a better upkeep. We can reduce the number of forty koi to maybe like fifteen max. So which will minimize and also reduce the cost of maintenance there. So that way we retain the wildlife to a certain extent. So we can provide the same enjoyment to residents and keep the bigger pond to more of a natural pond where we can chlorinate that water to keep that looking healthy. And also we can provide some signs saying it's a chlorinated water, so please do not bring any wildlife into it to discreate them from bringing more koi or turtles into that area.
If we end up doing that, I think we'll probably need a bench in that back area for families to sit. Kids watch the fish and the, and the, and turtles. But I do, I do like the idea because I think it's important that we keep keep the turtles and the fish because as Matt said, it's become a it's become a big thing for the kids. So, but I like the fact that we can have one section that is nice and remains clean too. The other thing that I would like, just like to mention is while The other thing that I would like, just like to mention is while I know we didn't promise the people whose name were on the tiles to maintain it for any length of time, I would like to see at least a plaque go up somewhere with all those names still on there because I think we want to acknowledge their original contribution to making the City Hall what it is. So I understand it may not make sense to put it on tiles on the ground, but it would be nice to have a plaque or something to recognize those names still.
Yeah, the architect's scope of work concludes a proposed memorial wall display, which I assume is.
Yeah.
Because we knew that, you know, we wanted to have that option.
Yeah. So I appreciate that, that part of it. And I'm a big Charles Moore fan since I've spent a lot of time up at Sea Ranch. So I, I, I think that's great. And I'm just really glad that we could find these architects that also honor Charles Moore as well to do this work. That'd be great.
I just want to clarify, the proposed project is just to the exterior. There's nothing interior. And there were some photos that displayed that, you know, or the rotundas and the like. This, this doesn't encompass any, any work on the building itself.
No, it's all exterior. And interior wise, I'm sorry, maybe the electrical and mechanical components.
Fine, not the building structure, design of the building. Okay, Councilmember Schess?
That was some serious peripheral vision there.
That was like the Nellie.
Yeah, it was like, God, that was, anyway. I just also, I just want to make sure I was clear on the fountain. I mean, obviously the, the changing of this water will certainly help with the, is, does the fountain need to be repaired in other ways? Is that part of, going to be part of this as well or changed at all? Or is it just we're going to have cleaner water so it won't look so mucky?
No, one of the thought processes to give a fresh look because of the tile colors and we were chosen because we were actually connecting with the sister city we had before. But since we don't no longer have that, so we were able to choose a tile that actually complements the building what we have and also give a fresh look.
So that sounds like kind of like a new fountain. I mean, a new.
Correct. It should definitely look and feel like a new fountain. And especially if we can get that water chlorinated. So then it will be work as more of like in a pool fountain, you know, how it's supposed to work.
And then we get another fountain back because the one in the middle of the pond will actually, would actually.
It will be working.
Yeah.
So we will have some vertical elements there.
So Alton, you raised the idea of additional fundraising for any new donors. Is that to add to the memorial wall? Or is there a thought that we're going to put new tiles in, in the walkways?
I would say we can definitely add it to the memorial wall we have because we, we have few areas that we have in mind where it could work. And you may not be on the ground. We can either on the column bases or on the face of the seating area. It's a perfect area. It's, it will be hidden and it will be very visible and it will not be exposed to any damages. So we can definitely add more tiles.
Well, when you say tile, that's.
I mean, the memorial, I'm sorry. So.
The wall could be tile.
It could, because all I can think of is the now's in a tile design at the library. And she did walk the site and she did give us some recommendation.
Right. Any other comments, Council on this? Any other thing further on your presentation?
This is it.
Good job, Deirdre.
I'm sure Alton forgot something you want to add, no? And you said we had an architect here as well?
Do you, Robert?
This is Mr. Nebelon? Come into the light.
Take a bow.
Anyway, everyone, council and the mayor, first of all, my team and I are really just thrilled that we're being considered for this project because we all deeply feel the, the work of Charles Moore is something to really consider and preserve, but also continue on and freshen up. We all feel that even Charles Moore would have loved to see his work modified because he was not a, a person who sat on his behind and just let things know. He, he always got the feeling that he wanted other things happen. And I do know that this would be a good place for it to start. And, and I met with the team and we, they're all thrilled too, the fountain consultant is chomping at the bit because he just thinks that this is really cool. And, and a couple of other things, we were here about two weeks ago, just passing through. And it was a beautiful sunny afternoon and it was a lot of fun to watch the family stroll through and count the turtles, feed fish. It was really quite a nice afternoon to see it. And so we really got a, a good eye, eyeful of some really nice things that happening. And, and so, and we're also just really thrilled that your city, you know, you, the council and the citizens are just so almost adamant in, in keeping up the flame of, of this wonderful building. I know we've all seen over periods of time where buildings just fall in disrepair or occupants just don't care anymore. But here it's, it's a special place and, and I know, I think it's great. And, and, and I know Kevin Kime, who's listening in Zoom world out there, is, is really happy as well. He will, as you know, he's the director of the Charles Moore Foundation and, and he will play a part in this as well. He has huge archives of everything and, and he's also plays an important part up at the Sea Ranch as well. He's up there all the time and, and he's everywhere. He's also known at other Charles Moore sites maintaining their, their, their integrity as well. And so, and I know he's thrilled as well. So did you want to ask me any questions as long as I'm here?
Sure, I'm going to ask you a question that probably is not fair. But what do you think about our proposed budget for this project? Is it realistic?
I think it's doable. Really of the fountain itself, we're going to look at new tile and, and more a long lasting pile. And so it's basically a large, you know, tile replacement job. Then the pavement out, out in the pavement, we've been looking just already just at some more stout tile. So we might pay a little bit more for it, but it'll last a whole lot longer than we have there. As far as the, the real money might go into re-piping and figuring out the mechanics of this because what, what was presented to us originally were three different systems. You know, the chlorinated fountain and then a unchlorinated pond for the turtles and the bass. And there's a bass fish in there and the live, the live pond. And then a medium somewhere in between for the large lake. So it wouldn't be so gunky, so kind of, and so, and that's going to require some, you know, re-plumbing and re-piping and drainage and, and, and just probably some other small things will come on up. So I think it's doable right now, but we'll have to be always cautious on this. But I don't really see anything that's really huge right now. But it'll be mostly just reworking the plumbing systems. The fountain consultant even mentioned that he might be able to get down to two systems with some smart filtering things. And the same fountain consultant, he, he already knows all about koi. He was telling me about some interesting things. So it'll be interesting to see what information he will share in his report after he, you know, he visits and all.
Maybe we can start an oyster farm or something and they could help clean the water for us.
Maybe. Any other questions on this?
Thank you.
No.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nebelon, very much.
Also, we do have Kevin on Zoom. He's a.
All right, Kevin, here's your fifteen seconds of fame in Pleasant Hill.
In Pleasant Hill. Oh, can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, good, good evening. Thank you for having us. And.
Right, well said.
Yes.
Thank you and good night.
You're welcome.
No, but seriously, thank you for caring about this because all, all too often I see, well, Charles Moore buildings and buildings of other architects that suffer because of a desire just to kind of sweep things away instead of improving and taking care of things. So, so I'm grateful that you're considering working with us to take care of that wonderful building you have.
Well, we're glad you share our passion and look forward to working with you.
Terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Kime. All right, at the end of the presentation now?
Yes, and if you have any questions.
Back to council, any other questions of Mr. Nebelon, Mr. Kime, Mr. Alton, Deirdre? Seeing none, we'll open public comment on this item. Is there anyone here in chambers who wishes to comment on this item? I see two members of the public not leaping out of their chair. We'll turn to our Zoom audience. Anyone wish to make public comment?
There are no hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment and move this back to council for discussion or a motion.
I would be honored to make the motion for this.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Nowak, a second from the Vice Mayor. May we have the roll call?
Nowak?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Schess?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes, and thank you all for being here and staying so late. There's been no further business. This meeting is adjourned. We have a special close session regarding labor negotiations tomorrow, October third at seven P M. Our next regular session is Monday, October sixteen at seven P M. See you then. Thank you.